Good evening, it's April 2nd. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission will call a meeting to order. First item is to approve the minutes of February 19th and March 5th. No objections. We'll approve the minutes. Next item is public hearings. We have six public hearings tonight. If you're not familiar with how we conduct public hearings, you'll be invited to the podium to speak for or against the matter. Please address all comments to the Planning Commission. You'll be allowed three minutes unless you're a spokesman for a group. Please keep your thoughts concentrated on what we're doing. We won't have dialogue back between the Planning Commission and you, but at the end of the public hearing, we will try to answer all of your questions. So with that, first item is rezoning application for approximately 4.26 acres along Warrior Drive to be rezoned from Commercial Highway to RM 16, Mark Perdle applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. The first public hearing we have this evening is for you to consider changing the zone of property. It's approximately 4.62 acres located along Warrior Drive from the current CH district, which is Commercial Highway District, to RM 16, and that's multifamily residential district. The map is up on the screen before you and shows an area shaded purple. And the area shaded purple is what is currently zoned CH and for which you are being requested to change the zoning to RM 16. You can see that the contiguous property to the north, northwest is also zoned CH, and that was zoned in that manner in 2011. And you can see the contiguous property to the south is zoned RM 16, that's multifamily residential district. When these properties were rezoned from their planned development district to RM 16 and CH in 2011, the dividing line was a stormwater conveyance that is on the property as they weren't certain to where the exact line should be. So now you have a request from Mr. Perdle, the property owner, to cross over that stormwater conveyance and add additional property to the RM 16 zone. In the CH district, of course, if it's Commercial Highway, you would see commercial type uses and there is a gas station that's currently under construction on the corner of Warrior Drive and New Salem Highway. For RM 16, we allow multifamily residential uses by right as well as single-family uses and various types of institutional uses. If this property is rezoned, combining it with the property to the south, you could have approximately 75 dwelling units in the area. There are some significant FEMA floodway and floodplain on the properties which will affect the design and the number of units that can be placed on the property. And there's also a large TVA easement that crosses the property. Both of those items will affect the design. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to formulating your recommendation, which we will then take to City Council. And if you have any questions, staff will be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Ms. Green, is there a presentation by the applicant?
Okay, yes, there is.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Tracy Hufaker. No formal presentation, just that we're here to answer any questions. Ms. Green has walked you through the details pretty detailed. We are adding this property to the adjacent 13 acres already with an RM 16 designation. The purpose is to add two additional buildings which will help offset some of the, being able to provide some amenities on the site with the additional multifamily units. And also, we are in preliminary design of the stormwater and we will hold water and stormwater runoff from other properties and ours. So it is somewhat of a public benefit too and to do that and direct it towards the interstate. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, the staff, the Planning Commission?
Another question, Ms. Green.
Yes, ma'am.
On our drawing, is the rezoning, maybe the right-of-way line is not exact or up to date because it doesn't look like the rezoning request goes all the way to the road?
Actually, that's correct, Ms. Jones. That's not quite correct now. When this property was considered by the Planning Commission for a planned commercial development a couple of years ago, well, several years ago now, there was a commitment for dedication of right-of-way to help improve the curvature of Warrior Drive. It is in our plans to see that smoothed out, so that part is not included in the rezoning request, the part that's going to become right-of-way.
Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to come speak for or against this.
Hello, I'm Tracy Huffaker, and I currently live at 1934 Cliffview Court. The residents of Cliffview are a little concerned because after speaking to Mr. Harney about this property, there seems to be some intent to put 300-unit apartment on this property. We don't think that Warrior Drive will sustain that kind of traffic. We know our schools will not sustain that kind of overload. And we just want to know for sure what research has been done relative to the rezoning. I was told it's for access, to have an access point on Salem as well as Warrior Drive.
Thank you, ma'am. Who would like to be next?
Alan Greer, 1942 Cliffview Court. Anytime we can change Commercial Highway to add additional buffer between our residents and the commercial property, you know, we're always in favor of looking at ways to do that. I do respectfully ask that you carefully consider the impact of how that RM 16 is developed. If it becomes, you know, townhomes or condominiums in limited quantities, you know, where we have invested persons purchasing into our neighborhood, that's great. If we saturate the property with a heavy load of apartments and we bring in an abundance of additional families, we have some significant concerns about the impact that will have not only on the traffic on Warrior Drive, but on the access exit points, egress points from Interstate 24 onto Highway 99, and of course, the impact on our schools. Today, if you look at the traffic pattern down off of Highway 231, we routinely have unfortunate accidents because that traffic backs up onto the interstate. And if we add an additional, you know, several hundred more cars a day coming and going off of a property like this, I would hate to see Highway 99 become another point where traffic backs up onto the interstate. Our schools today are very crowded, overcrowded. We have children that are attending classrooms in portables. And I would ask you respectfully to consider the impact, how this property is developed, so that our students can continue to enjoy the classroom numbers that we have today and that we don't become so saturated. I'm not sure, you know, what plans we have to build another school, additional schools to support a large RM 16 development, but would ask that you carefully consider that before moving forward with any development plans. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Who would like to be next?
My name is Matt Murphy. I'm 1015 Warrior Drive. I'd just like to add, I'm in the same subdivision as him, I'd also like to add the safety concerns regarding the fact that there are no sidewalks up and down either side of Warrior Drive, large high school, and many, many students walking both past my house in the morning. I see them further down when I'm going towards 231. They're commuting back and forth, they're crossing the street, and any additional traffic, you know, I'd be concerned for the safety of students. Also, as to putting a large eyesore in such a nice area of the Greenway that's developed, lots of people like to fish in that area of the community, lots of people like to go there on Saturday and Sunday. I see people down there all the time. And, you know, I'm afraid that something like this would detract from the Greenway, which is frankly, a very nice part of living in Murfreesboro, and I'd hate to see anything taken away from that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Come on.
I was trying to be patient. Kara Greer, also at 1942 Cliffview Court. Kind of wanted to leverage the last two comments that were made, first by my husband, who made the comments about the schooling and being overcrowded. I'm the blessed mother of six children that attend Rutherford County Schools. Well, one's at MTSU, but he did go through Rutherford County. And one thing that I've seen in past precedents, even when Rutherford County School Board has accommodated and built new schools, the zoning sometimes is affected. Past precedent was set when Barfield Elementary opened. The kids that lived at Charleston South, right across the street from the school, were rezoned to Christiana Elementary, so they had to be bused where they could have just walked. And we're so fortunate to have so many kids in Rutherford County, but just to accommodate the additional dwelling that is going to, or is proposed to be built at the end of Warrior Drive, to somehow figure out how to not have those kids go to the proposed Rockvale High School when they could just walk, but then also to incorporate my neighbors' comments about the safety of them walking on Warrior Drive. I love to run on Warrior Drive. It's a great place, it's beautiful, scenic, right on the river, but there are no sidewalks. There are really no safety aspects to accommodate either children walking or folks getting out and about on that road. So I think the additional congestion with additional folks living there will be a challenge.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Catherine Cambalores, and I live at 1922 Cliffview Court. I am in agreement with all of my neighbors, all of the statements that they made to all of you, and I would like you to also, to consider with the traffic situation, consider the effect on how much it would increase the pollution in our area. We live in such a beautiful area with the river and the trees there and with an addition of 300 units there and at least one to two cars per unit that will increase the pollution in the area significantly. And we respectfully request that you consider that. Thank you.
Who would like to be next?
Yes, sir. I am Bill Emery. I live at 1935 Cliffview Court. I support all the neighbors' points of view as well as, I would like to, I guess, revisit the traffic both on Warrior Drive and especially on Salem. I currently work up in Smyrna, come home off the interstate there at New Salem Road, and it's difficult at times to get off the interstate and cross over with an additional potential, at least what we've heard, 300-unit apartment complex that would, I can't imagine what that would be like, trying to get traffic through there and across the bridge over the west prong of the river. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Sarah Adams at 1930 Cliffview Court. I'm here with my husband Jeff. I agree with all that my neighbors have said, and I just wanted to add that I kind of feel that RM 16 zoning is so open-ended, it could be anything, and I would like to see something put there that's consistent with the lovely homes that are already there on Warrior Drive and on Cliffview Court. I would wonder if the property owner would consider a different zoning, PRD, Planned Residential Development, instead, so there could be some accountability.
Who would like to be next?
My name is John Harney. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mark Perdle. He couldn't be here tonight, he's actually out of town. Listening to some of these comments, I'd like to address some of them, and of course, Mr. Adlott or Ms. Green may want to address some of them as well. At the present zoning that's there now with about 13 and a half acres, we've got a preliminary layout of about 250 units that are allowed on the property as it's owned today. And talking with apartment developers and some different groups that have looked at it, they really were concerned about there wasn't enough units there to do the level of amenities that they wanted to do, to really create a nicer, more luxury-style apartment complex, which if we drive around town, we see that the level of the apartments, as far as the amount of amenities, keep rising. And to be competitive in the market, to have a nice complex, you've got to have a reasonable number of units to justify the amount you spend on the amenities. One reason for extending this residential area into the commercial is so that we could provide a front door for the apartment complex on New Salem Highway. There's already been a pre-designed access road that benefits both the commercial and if this plan is approved, will be a front door to the multifamily, so the primary focus of the apartment complex will be on New Salem, it won't be on Warrior. Now, there will have to be an additional outlet onto Warrior because this size complex or most any today, you want to have more than one entrance for emergency purposes or whatever, should want to get blocked. We've got another design that's presently being looked at with a couple of different apartment developers that's about 305 to 310 units. So basically, this is allowing us to probably add about another 50 to 60 units to the property. Now, as I think Ms. Green talked about, we've got the buffer areas with the lake, we've got water quality detention ponds that have put in on a drain that sort of comes through the property. There's several things that are going to limit how many units you can actually put on the property. We're asking to create a better project than what is already approved with the existing zoning we've got. Mr. Perdle has still got a sizable investment there, still got a sizable investment in the commercial. You know, the last thing he'd want to do is put something that is bad for the community and bad for the property because it's going to affect his property values of what he's got left to sell as well. So we hope by bringing this design, asking for four more acres out front, taking it off the commercial, will actually create a better community than what we're approved for as it stands today. And I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions, or Ms. Akers could, from a technical standpoint as well. If not, I'll be available. Thank you.
Anyone like to speak? You can only speak once, sir. I'm sorry I didn't make that clear in my initial announcement, but... Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am, come on.
My name is Holly Murphy. I live at 1015 Warrior Drive, and I've lived in the Murfreesboro area for just about a year and a half now. And in that time, I've seen several property developments popping up all over the place, and I'm just wondering if another type of residential housing like this is needed in Murfreesboro at this time, and, you know, if there's actually a market for this type of unit and building that's going to be put on the property, and I'd just like to know.
Anyone else like to speak? Comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Green, you want to start answering some of these questions?
Sure. There were several questions about Warrior Drive in particular and about the state it's in and how it is inadequate or substandard, as we like to refer to it, and that there really need to be improvements made to Warrior Drive. And city staff agree, and we actually, when we have been reviewing the zoning plans and any of the plans for this property, we're requiring the property owner to give us, to give the city right-of-way so that we can have an opportunity to improve that street. We do understand that sidewalks are necessary and that as the Planning Commission, you require sidewalks on new developments on both sides of the street in every situation, and that's just something that we expect. Of course, the street was something that was constructed in the county, and we inherited it when we annexed the property, but we certainly agree that there needs to be improvements made to the property. And I think, I'm not sure where the street improvement plans are. Mr. Adlott's kind of smiling. I don't know if you know any more information about the status of improvements to Warrior Drive.
Well, first of all, the applicants or whoever the eventual developer of the property, whether it be commercial or residential, will be expected to participate in the improvements to Warrior Drive. The applicant has already dedicated or made provisions to dedicate right-of-way, as shown on the illustration where they pulled back our request area from the curvature of the road. So we have it as part of our standard operating procedures to see improvements to Warrior Drive as development takes place. It may be that in some cases, they construct turn lanes, in some cases, it may be required to build curbs and gutters. That's something we're going to take a very hard look at when we review a site plan, whether it be commercial or residential. Perhaps the bigger concern to me is not just the traffic on Warrior, but the traffic on Salem Highway. Salem Highway is a road that we're waiting for the state to rebuild. It's kind of gotten off to a rocky start on its construction. I'm not exactly sure of the timeframe for the reconstruction of it, but it is one of those that we're pursuing vigorously. Mr. Richardson makes frequent trips and frequent inquiries with TDOT to find out the status and to keep it, to get it back on track. And at this point, I'm not sure just where we stand, but I'm thinking we're looking at the next two or three years before construction starts, depending upon the state's funding for it. Warrior Drive is only part of the puzzle, but Salem Highway is perhaps the bigger issue. The development we have been discussing will more than likely have direct access on the Salem Highway. Most of these large development complexes like this prefer to have a direct access to a state highway. It's good for their marketing, it's good for their management. And as Mr. Harney did say, he is correct, we would want access on the Warrior, at least as a secondary access, not as primary access necessarily, but for emergency services. When one access is blocked by accidents or whatever purposes, we want to have another way in. Our fire department likes to have another way into these type of complexes. Mr. Harney is correct, there is already about 210, 250 units that could be built under the current zoning that's zoned RM 16. If we put the map back up, just to show everybody, the area that's colored purple is the area that's requested to be rezoned. That property consists of about 4.62 acres. The larger tract to the south is already zoned to RM 16. It already has been for several years now, and it could be developed with apartments come what may. Part of what is hard to see on the map is you see an area that is labeled RS 15. That's a lake. You may be familiar with it, you see it, it's a part of the river, Stones River. They want to get enough of the complex to the north side of that lake that they can get an access drive over to Salem Highway. What you can't see and doesn't show on this map will be that there will be an appendage of the RM 16 area that will extend over to Salem Highway, almost in line with that straight line just below the C and the H. Somewhere in that area is what we're probably looking at. So what they're trying to do is to get a part of the area that's zoned RM 16 more accessible to that. I want to talk about schools for a moment. Last year, we did a study on schools. If every unit had a school, aged child, it would be quite a number of population there that would be attending schools. Our studies indicate that complexes like we're talking about has a very low student population. My projections would be maybe somewhere in the order of 20 to 25 students would reside in this complex, depending upon the exact number, and also depend upon the mix of units. People choose not to, for the most part, and there are exceptions, but choose to raise school-aged children in more of a subdivision environment, less in apartments. Now, there are exceptions. Substandardized housing seems to have a higher number of children per unit than market rate. My understanding, this would be a more of a market rate approach, but at this point, I don't know, and I can't guarantee one way or the other. But somewhere in the order of 20 to 25 students would be what I would expect, based upon other comparable size developments in our community. And we did take a real hard look at schools last year. And I would also add that there's probably a whole lot more than 20 children in the Cliffview subdivision, although I'm not for certain on that, and that changes from year to year as families mature and people age and subdivisions change. With regards to the Greenway, I think that Mr. Perdle is actually, at this point, even talking with the city about maybe the city eventually having ownership of that lake, which will help to protect the Greenway. So we're very conscious of the Greenway and its effect. One of the things I like to see in an apartment complex is that it becomes more of a campus and people, individuals will not have ownership down to the water, it will be more of a managed approach. And in this case, I think the applicant's working with our staff already so that we can secure the lake as part of the Greenway amenity. And we're looking forward to being able to have that ownership to, I guess, take custody of that part of the river. The situation about, could this be anything in regards to what could happen here? The RM 16 zoning does allow for multifamily complexes, but it also does allow for such things as assisted living facilities, which would be a housing type of use too. We don't see a whole lot of assisted living facilities, but it's possible that one could be developed here. But commercial uses could not be, that would be taken away. Commercial uses cannot be developed in RM 16 district. PRD accountability, this property was once zoned as part of a PRD, actually a PUD development. The recession came and the ability to implement that PUD caused the applicants to come back to the city and ask for it to be rezoned. And there was no way for that approved plan development to be approved. And that's the downfall of a plan development. When market conditions change, circumstances change, the plan development is very hard to implement. But I will point out that if that's the desire of the City Council, as it was several years ago, that could always be something the Planning Commission and Council could look back at. But we've begun to move away from those because of the problems that we're dealing with and will be dealing with for quite a number of years, and straightening out the plan developments that can't be implemented because of market financing or all the various reasons why. Those are the things I heard questions about. Were there anything else that the Planning Commission had maybe wanted me to clarify or Ms. Green to clarify?
I have a question. This, one of the benefits, if I can use that word, for this would be to make the primary entrance and exit of this development on the Salem Highway?
Yes, sir, as a possibility. And since I have not seen a site plan yet for us to review, I don't know for a fact that that will come about, but this improves the ability to do that by getting on the same side of the stormwater conveyance for that possibility to get direct access to Salem Highway.
And you mentioned stormwater, and that's been a low area, a whole area for 5,000 years probably. You had mentioned that this may relieve some of the drainage from the other areas to bring water across this and into this to hold this before it goes into the river?
I think that's what Ms. Akers alluded to, and part of what we're going to do is, and part of our new stormwater requirements are, that every development holds its own water, an inch, the first inch of water that falls in a rain event. We also require water quality before it discharges into the river. So we will be requiring an extensive stormwater management program on this property, and one of the benefits is that there's water that goes through this site from the other side of Warrior Drive. Actually, sometimes water comes from this side of Warrior Drive to the other side, depending upon how the river works. But they're going to have to manage that water, and there may be some secondary benefits to the rest of the community as a result.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Adlott, I think that we've had some reference since the recession that there is more requests or demand for apartment living or renting versus home ownership, but I also know that the city occasionally does look at the number of apartment units we have in our city and whether we're oversaturated or not, and has been, I remember seeing one of those one time, sometime in my time on the Planning Commission. I don't know how long that's been, but do we have any numbers on that? I know there was the one reference to whether or not we needed another apartment complex at this time, and I know that's not part of what we're really here to do, but it was just another question I heard that I don't think we've addressed.
Thank you. I didn't address that, and I failed to, I had it on my list but forgot to address it. Let me discuss that for just a moment. The demand for multifamily housing is obviously there. We see that the multifamily complexes around Murfreesboro remain at a high occupancy rate. I constantly get... I constantly get reports from people who manage apartments, people who own apartments, particularly the big complexes, that they remain at 92% to 97%, which is very high for them. They expect to have vacancy, they expect to have some, but they seem to operate at a very high rate. Every time we see a complex come into the market and open up and start taking renters and customers, it affects the numbers. So, there'd be a short-term impact on the numbers, but it builds up quick. It seems like that, real quickly, the market studies that the lenders and that the developers do indicate a continued need. So, that has been ongoing, and it seems like it happens quicker. The apartments hit the market, they quickly fill up, the demand is there. Part of an indicator to me is a desire on the part of people wanting to develop the product. If there is a very little opportunity, they wouldn't be coming. But their studies they're doing indicate to them that there is a need, and they continue to come to us. Now, there's also another part of this analysis, and it is the right zoning for the right place regardless of what the market is today. If we wait until the market demands that we rezone, we may cause someone not to be in a position to market their property or to seek a user. And that may be a strategy that some communities take. It's not been a strategy that Murfreesboro has taken over the years. Our feeling has been, is it the right use at the right location? When demand comes, the market will dictate how it will be absorbed or how and when it will be developed. Still, again, that is a philosophy of development and management that different communities have different approaches to. Ours has been more of go ahead and establish the zoning and let the market respond when it's ready. My belief is that the market will in fact respond when it's ready by someone bringing us a site plan for the development, if it's zoned right. I'll point out that the zoning process takes about 120 days. So, when someone is ready to embark upon that process, if their property is not already zoned, they are in competition with any other site that is already zoned. The question comes back to, and is perhaps more important to you as a planner, is it the right use at the right location? If it's the wrong use, it doesn't need to be rezoned. If it's the right use, well, it certainly has passed at least one test. Another consideration is, is there adequate capacities of traffic, of utilities, and of the support services to service it if it were to develop? From the indications we've got, the answers to the sewer is yes, the answers to the water is yes, the answer to the traffic is a tentative yes. We know that there are somewhat committed traffic improvements to Salem Highway, and we know that we will demand of the developer roadway improvements to Warrior Drive. So, it's a tentative yes rather than an absolute yes. We know that a site plan will have to come back before this body, for you to cast your judgment on it, before they ever get building permits. So, that's part of the discussion that you should have, I guess, among yourselves and in your minds as you pass judgment on this application and make a recommendation for council.
Thank you.
This is just a small question, but it goes more to the site plan. Ms. Green just mentioned the whole sidewalks, but do we really foresee sidewalks on Warrior Drive even within this development, since there are no other sidewalks on Warrior Drive?
Right now, I would have to give basically a tentative indication on that, because we're going to take a holistic look at it. We know that we've lost our opportunity for sidewalks to be constructed by the developers of Cliffview. We've lost our opportunity to see sidewalks developed by the developers of Shenandoah and the other developments along Warrior Drive. Will a requirement that developers along this property to construct sidewalks, will it cause a problem? Will it cause a safety problem? If it will cause a safety problem, we don't want to do that. Is there a destination? If there's a destination that some people will use the sidewalks for, it makes more sense than if they don't. And it occurs to me that there are in fact two destinations. One of them is the, actually three, there's the Greenway on the other side of the river, there is the school, but there's also the pass-through to get to one side and the other for the people who already live out there. My initial thinking is that we would expect them to be obligated for the sidewalks. But it's also my gut that if it's the wrong time to build, if it's not the right time to build them now, we may ask that they make a payment in lieu of construction so that when we have more in place, when the other side of Warrior begins to develop, then maybe we can approach it on a more holistic basis. And that's another option. We'll have to take a look at that during the site plan review process.
There was some comment about this being a buffer by taking some of this out of commercial highway and making this RM16, that that would be a buffer. Is that, am I on the right track of that?
Well, there is some merit to that way of thinking. Typically, we use, in many instances, we have used a transition of zoning classifications between uses of lower intensity and higher intensity to create a buffer. The best buffer is distance. So, this additional multifamily would add additional distance between the closest commercial to the residential to the south. So, there is some merit to that observation.
The only comment that I have is, and we have no control over this, and just like you said, the traffic director for the city, Murfreesboro, is talking to the state at all times. It would be nice to know if there was a target date as to construction with Highway 99 so that the people here in the crowd could feel not confident, but have some ease of feeling that the impact of this development would be not as bad based upon the improvements in that road. But at this point, we have no guarantee one way or the other as to when that might happen.
Mr. Hudson, do you have any lead information on the timing for that?
Mr. Idalot, I do not. The T-DOT Horizon that's published every year is a three-year horizon, and that's published by the governor's office in coordination with the commissioner of the Department of Transportation. So, the last version that we got was last spring. They'll be renewing that list and looking out three more years with the budgeting process at the state level this year. So, I would expect within the next couple of months, we'll be seeing that list republished
I think part of our issue here is that we have this area zoned RM16, and it is already zoned RM16, and they can get about 250 units on there as it is. This additional 4.62 acres just allows for the 50 to 60 more units and more amenities. And, you know, certainly the zoning seems appropriate if you look at the map and everything around it. So, my motion would be that we would approve this rezoning request.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is rezoning application for 2.48, 2.0 acres along Casey Lane to be rezoned from OG to OGR. Mr. Kent Air on behalf of Keach Investments applicant.
Thank you. The next public hearing is for you to consider zoning, rezoning approximately two acres from its current OG zone, which is General Office District, to OGR, which is General Office District Residential. The OG zone is located just south of property zone CH, and that's Highway Commercial District. And it's also located adjacent to property zone PCD, and that's Planned Commercial District. Properties to the south are zoned PRD and are part of the Three Rivers Plan Development, which are single-family homes. The subject property, of course, is located along Casey Lane, south of Salem Highway, our state Route 99, adjacent to Spence Creek and adjacent to the Creekside at Three Rivers Assisted Living Facility. The applicants desire to purchase this property and expand the assisted living facility, the Three Rivers Assisted Living Facility portion of the development onto this property. The OG zone does not allow assisted living use by right, so their request to change the property to OGR is motivated to change it to a zone that would allow an assisted living facility by right. And so, that is the purpose of their request to change the zoning application. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding this zoning change request. If you have any questions, of course, staff will be glad to answer them. And I believe Ms., yeah, Cherie Akers will come up.
Good evening again. Cherie Akers with Huddleson Steel. As Ms. Green indicated, we're proposing to rezone these two point, little over two acres from OG to OGR to allow assisted living. The preliminary site planning is essentially yielding about 36 additional units for the adjacent facility. It'll be about three buildings, 12 units in each building. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from Ms. Akers? We'll open the public hearing and ask anyone to come speak for or against this matter. Anyone like to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes? There is discussion, questions, motions?
No questions, vice chairman, I move for approval, recommend approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is rezoning application for 6.31 acres along Garcia Boulevard to be rezoned from RS12 to RS10. Mr. Jamie Taber for TNL Development LLC applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our next request is for you to consider rezoning approximately 6.3 acres from its current RS12 district, and that's single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet, down to the RS10 district, which is also a single-family residential district, but has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. So, the difference is 2,000 square feet as the minimum lot size. The subject property is located along Garcia Boulevard between Victory Point subdivision and Blackman Oaks East. It consists of a portion of the property from which the Trafalgar Square subdivision was developed. The new owners desire to subdivide the property with lots similar to that which is located adjacent to the property. The properties to the east and south are zoned RS12. The properties to the east is zoned PUD and has developed the single-family residential subdivision with a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. This property is very familiar to you because in the last planning commission, you reviewed a subdivision plat for section one of the subdivision, or I think technically it was section two. Section two, all the lots exceeded the 12,000 square foot minimum. However, in section three, there were three, there were several lots that were below that 12,000 square foot minimum. So, any approval of that was deferred until a zoning change request became effective. If this property is rezoned from RS10, RS12 to RS10, then they will gain approximately three lots total. So, it's not a big change from the development. As a matter of fact, the street layout has a lot to do with how this property will look in the future. So, it's not a big jump to change it from RS12 to RS10 as the gain is only three, possibly four lots, but when I calculated it, it was three lots. The applicants would like for you to consider this request to change the property from RS12 to RS10. You should conduct a public hearing prior to forwarding your recommendation to city council. And I believe Ms. Akers would like to come back up and introduce herself.
Cherie Akers, Huddleson Steel. As Ms. Green's indicated, we're proposing to change this section of the development from RS12 to RS10, and it does yield about approximately three to four additional units. And it's very consistent with other development in the area, which are about 7,000 to 7,500 square foot lots, so it would not be inconsistent. Both John Harney and myself are here to answer any questions that you might have about the project. Thank you.
Any questions? We'll open a public hearing and ask anyone that wants to speak to this matter, please Anyone else like to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I have a question. Ms. Akers, the housing styles and really won't, will there be a change in these?
I can confidently say no, there may be some slight changes.
Slight, but not major. I mean...
I don't have the developer here to answer that, but, sorry. I would think from a marketing perspective, they would want them to be pretty consistent with what's around them and adjacent to them.
That was the point I wanted to get to. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Young and members of the planning commission, in my discussions with the applicants, part of what's driving the need to change this was that since the time this was originally laid out and the streets were sort of put in place, which is the framework for what they're doing, the city has adopted stormwater regulations that has bit into their lot, you know, just a little bit. And they're really trying to regain back to where they would have been. They're different from the original developers, but in looking at the development cost, looking at the land that's lost to the stormwater management program, they're just trying to get back where they are and do that, picking up about three lots, gets them pretty much there. I did discuss with them possibilities like RS8, they didn't want to do that. They were looking to keep something that would still be just almost driving from the street, would look almost like the RS12. It's only 2,000 square foot difference in lot size, and it'd be just like a sliver off each side all the way to the back, and you don't even notice it. Same setbacks, 35 foot, the same in RS12 and RS10, 10-foot sides, 25-foot rear. So, it will be almost transparent. They're looking, as Ms. Akers said, trying to keep what the market has demanded in that area, and that's what my expectations are.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve this rezoning application.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Our next item is the annexation petition for .98 acres along Old Fort Parkway, Franklin Road. Mrs. Marcella Ann Richardson, executor of the state, for Ms. Lois Jean Richardson applicant.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for you to consider annexing property located along Old Fort Parkway or Franklin Road, which is Highway 96. This property is shaded in orange on the map that's before you. What's not shown on this map in particular is the additional right-of-way, which is included in the study area. So, the area for which you're being requested to study annexation is a parcel that's approximately .77 acres, and then an 85 linear feet of Highway 96 right-of-way, which brings the total study area to .98 acres. So, the area shaded orange shows that .77 acres, which is being annexed, but the map in your plan of services does show the right-of-way. So, if you'd like to take a look at that map, you have it available to you. The property is bordered on three sides by the Franklin Road Baptist Church. The owners are petitioning for annexation in order to benefit from city-provided services. This is an annexation request that has been made by the property owner, so it's not taken from the city's initiative, but from the property owner's volition. The area that is being petitioned for annexation is contiguous with current city limits, which means it touches current city limits. It's within our urban growth boundary, and no other properties must be annexed in order for this property to become effectively annexed. You've been provided a copy of the plan of services and feasibility study in your packet. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer that. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding the annexation of this parcel. And I believe Mr. Bratcher would like to, before you open the public hearing, come up and introduce himself and the project.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Bratcher.
Good evening. Chairman Yang and planning commission members, I'm Chris. Chairman Young and planning commission members, I'm Chris Bratcher through Ed Rilphy. I'm here representing the property owners. Ms. Marshall Richardson is the daughter of Jean and James Richardson. They were the owners of this property. I think they resided there for probably 50 years. They've been there for their entire lives and raised their families at this home. They have passed away, and they have left this property to their daughter, Ms. Richardson. So at this time, she is just asking for annexation, and I think there's a rezoning request accompanying this next. So I'll be glad to answer any questions on the annexation.
Any questions? If not, we'll open a public hearing and ask anyone to come forward to speak for or against this matter. Anyone like to speak? Anyone at all? If not, we'll close the public hearing and ask for questions from planning commissioner or a motion.
Mr. Young, if there's no discussion, I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is a zoning application for approximately .77 acres along Old Fort Parkway, Franklin Road to be zoned CH simultaneously with annexation. Mrs. Marcella Ann Richardson, executor of the state of Lois Jean Richardson applicant.
Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This is a companion zoning change request to accompany the previous public hearing for which you just held. The parcel, which is .77 acres, the property owner has requested that you consider zoning the property CH simultaneous with its annexation. This property, of course, is located along the north side of Old Fort Parkway or Franklin Road or Highway 96, and it's just west of 96, Highway 96 intersection with Gresham Lane. The owners have made an application for the property to be zoned CH simultaneous with its annexation. As I mentioned before, the property to the north, east, and west contiguous with this parcel are all properties developed and owned by the Franklin Road Baptist Church. The property to the east is owned by the church, but is improved with a single-family residence. Next parcel to the east is on the corner of Gresham Lane and Highway 96, and it's zoned CH, and that's Highway Commercial District. The property that's located across Franklin Road is located within the city of Murfreesboro and is also zoned CH, and that's Highway Commercial District. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding this zoning change or this zone change to CH simultaneous with the annexation. Mr. Bratcher, did you want to speak to the zoning of the project as well, if you allow him that opportunity, and then open a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Bratcher.
Good evening again, Chairman Young. I'm here, as like I said earlier, representing Marshall Richardson, the daughter of her deceased parents. They've been here for a long time. Her desire is to sell the property. She has no desire to live there, and we feel like the best and highest use would be for this to be zoned commercial highway. There's a lot of development along the Old Fort Parkway area. A lot of the homes across the street are, look like they were residential homes, but they had developed as commercial usage. And we don't, we don't desire to do that at this location. We think that we would prefer to see someone come in and develop this in a really nice commercial use. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bratcher. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Invite anyone to speak for or against this matter. Anyone like to speak? If no one wants to speak, we'll close the public hearing.
Chairman, if there are no questions, I move we recommend approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. All right, thank you. Our next item is zoning application for approximately 4.1 acres along Wilkinson Pike to be rezoned from RS 15 to MU mixed-use. Mr. Thomas C. Smith on behalf of CM Gatton applicant.
Ms. Green.
Thank you. Our final public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning application made by Mr. Smith on behalf of Mr. Gatton to rezone approximately 4.1 acres from, located south of Wilkinson Pike, from its current RS 15 district, and that's single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, to the newly created MU district, and that's our mixed-use district. The subject property is located along Wilkinson Pike, just west of the intersection with Willow Oak Trail. The application, of course, is to rezone it from RS 15 to MU that was recently adopted. Much of the land that is adjacent to this property is under the same ownership and is already zoned MU. This area consists of a strip of 250 feet deep property along Wilkinson Pike. The applicant is requesting that this additional area be zoned to MU to allow for the development of the property under one zoning district because that, these parcels are under one ownership. The subject property is also located within the Gateway Design Overlay District, GDO 2, and that will not change with a part of this zoning change request. So if approved, it would be zoned both MU and GDO 2. As a part of the GDO regulations, there's a requirement for Wilkinson Pike buffer, and I've got another illustration that shows that Wilkinson Pike buffer, which is 100-foot dimension from Wilkinson Pike, and you can see that labeled on the map. There are several requirements for the Wilkinson Pike buffer, but I'd just like to go over a few that may apply to this property if it's zoned MU. One of which is that the buffer zones, that's that 100-foot area, shall not be used as a storage area. Another restriction is that parking lots, parking structures, accessory structures, dumpsters, temporary structures, storage facilities, or maintenance structures shall not be located within this buffer zone. And there's also a building setback along this buffer zone. So if it's a multifamily development, there's a 100-foot setback, and that's the same for both office and commercial district. So there can be no buildings located within that 100 feet, which is that orange shaded strip that you see on the map before you. Mr. Matt Taylor is here this evening, and he's representing the applicant, and I'll invite him to the lectern at this time to introduce himself and the application. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions before we get started? Mr. Taylor?
Chairman Young and members of the planning commission, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC here in town. I'm accompanied by Mr. Tommy Smith. We're both representing the landowner, Mr. Gatton, tonight. We view this application as really just allowing us to continue the previously approved master plan that was approved back in 2008 for this entire tract. This area in question, at that time, was envisioned as an assisted living facility, a possible location for an assisted living facility, and the applicant's actually recently finalized a contract for purchase for just such a facility. So our intention is to have an assisted living facility here. If you grant this request, it will allow a nice consistent zoning on the property and for them to allow that end user to construct and develop the property to its full potential while respecting all the GDO and Wilkinson Pike buffers that are on the property itself. That master plan, we started already kind of implementing that by constructing the roadways and utilities, first of all, and then right now, you'll see the second piece of that being the apartment complex, Henley Station, that's up under construction right now. So with this zoning and this end user, it'll allow that master plan to be, continue to be implemented out there. Even with the zoning, the property is still fairly heavily encumbered, at least this portion of it with easements in the buffer. We've got a large TVA easement. We've got sewer easements along Wilkinson Pike. Now, of course, we have the Wilkinson Pike buffer, which is almost two acres in size of this requested area. So myself or Mr. Smith would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Gilli.
Matt, from a quality standpoint, when we talk about assisted living facility...
Yes.
Can you give us maybe some examples of the type, of a parallel type of facility we're talking about?
I don't know the particular end user. Mr. Smith might be able to answer that, but I would say that because of its location and price of the land, we're going to see something similar to the Creekside, which was before you earlier tonight. That's not necessarily an assisted, that may be an assisted living, but of that similar quality.
Okay.
Maybe not the same design, maybe not two-story. I don't know enough about the buildings yet, but I would say something like that.
Carrie, thank you.
I have a question. Ms. Green, do you have an update on the reconstruction of Wilkinson Pike or something on staff?
I don't. Let me consult our environmental engineer, Mr. Sam Huddleston.
He said, "Don't look at me." Don't look at me.
We do have that on the radar screen, and this property and the other properties that Mr. Smith is involved with have already dedicated right-of-way, and he's agreed to participate in the, in the cost of construction along his right-of-way as that time comes. My suspicion on the timing is probably two or three years out before we'd actually see the start of construction.
I have one more question. 100-foot buffer, is there other 100-foot buffers in this community?
I'm not aware of any in any other places that are 100 feet, no.
That's my question. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Taylor. If not, we'll open a public hearing and ask anyone to come and speak for this matter. Anyone care to speak? Well, I'm glad I'm not selling something. Anyone care to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions? Comments? Motions?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Our next item is staff reports and other business. Mr. Adalata.
No, sir. I have none.
I have none?
I have none.
Mr. Huddleston.
I have none.
What about distinguished planners in the side over there? Do they have any comments?
I have none.
Not Mr. Blomley.
She told you.
That's right. He was going to say something, but he's not now. All right, seeing no other staff or business, we adjourn.